It's always just been there. Barry Curtis is in the rating room and we are now live streaming YouTube. So we are. Yes, sir.
It's called a work session is about county board. Stand for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Green. Commissioner Engler. Commissioner Jelzinski. Commissioner Horton. Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner Sweeney. And Commissioner Hope. All present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Presentations and special reports. We have two items this afternoon. We have no. Boards and commissions ranges to committee reports, finance and administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance and administration committee is also.
Item B is the criminal justice and county affairs committee.
Criminal justice and county affairs committee is offset, Mr. Chairman.
Item C is the human resource and public works committee.
Human resource and public works committee is offset, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item D is the intergovernmental affairs. Commissioner Hope, is there anything to add there?
There is not, Mr. Chairman.
There's nothing?
No, sir.
Thank you. Nicole, do you have anything to add? Unfinished business. We have a budgetary resolution to go through. And then under new business item A, we have. Request for the tribe. A motion in order to approve approve the agenda as presented.
Support Horton.
Been moved and supported to prove the agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Post, we have agenda. Item number four is general. Nicole, is there anybody waiting to?
Taking a good look here, Mr. Chairman. We've got more people on, I think. To be staffed for the most part, but this is the the period of the agenda. If you want to give public comment, you. Raise your hand by pressing star nine on your keypad. It looks like most people are joined by video. We have no one at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then moving on to presentations and special reports. Item A. Is Sarah Atkins from the soup kitchen, Isabella County Community Soup Kitchen. Sarah. Good to have you on board here. That's a valuable asset to the community.
Oh, well, thank you so much, and I really appreciate you having me join you today. Nicole and I had a great conversation. And so I really appreciate your willingness to have me join your meeting today. My reason for reaching out is really just to spread awareness of the increase in food insecurity that we're seeing at this time. It is, I'm sure, you know, mostly directed to COVID, and what we're our numbers have increased about 300%. Prior to COVID, we were serving 80 to 100 meals a day. And now, on average, we're at 260, 270 a day. And we are operating on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So. We are seeing, like I said, you know, 260, 270 a day, and we've seen a huge increase in the number of children we're serving as well. Prior to COVID, we would, you know, five, six, less than 10 kids a day, and now we're at 50, 60. So we've definitely seen an increase there as well. And, you know, looking ahead. You know, we're trying to prepare for, obviously, the colder weather is coming. But I don't see the issue of food insecurity getting better before it gets worse, unfortunately. And that's part of my purpose in just reaching out to our community to. You know, kind of ring the bell that this this is a growing problem and we need to pull together whatever resources we have available to help the needs that people have.
Do, Sarah, do you have questions from the board?
I don't particularly have any questions. I just wanted to. You know, make contact with you all and just let you know what's going on is, you know, at my level, working with the population that I work with. And really just, you know, everybody knows somebody. And so if there's, you know, other resources that are available that I'm not aware of, that you may know or know somebody who knows somebody, we definitely can use all the help we can get. Our operational expenses, because we've had to move to to-go meals, have gone from. You know, I used to spend about $100 to $200 a week on food and supplies for the meals that we prepared. And now. Because mostly because of all the packaging, I'm at about $1,000 to $1,200 a week. So, you know, it it I never knew how expensive paper bags were. So, you know, that's a lot of resources we're using. And again, fortunately, we've been able to access some grant funding and have had a couple of very generous donations. But again, you know, it's it's a concern. Our fundraiser has been canceled, just like everybody else's. So I just see not only for our organization, but other organizations in the community who are working with those most affected by COVID and all the ramifications. You know, resources are tight and the need is increasing.
Is there any commissioners that have comments for Sarah on the soup kitchen? Commissioner John Ljenski.
I'm not sure which month it was. Maybe it was March or April, but we the Shepherd Knights of Columbus has a membership and a organization called NEAR, and I had some items and brought them over to the kitchen, but you weren't able to accept them at that time because of a building project. Project just about done now, or?
So the project, we were able to move back into our building because the offices had. For anybody who doesn't know, we just completed a capital campaign project where we added more dining space. We added more staff and volunteer space. We had to replace our walk-in cooler freezer. So it was a very large project. So we were finally able to move back into the offices. Were able to move back in in January. And at that time, we were pretty much finished. And then, you know, we had been open. I mean, the dining room never closed. Fortunately, JBS did such a great job and we we never had to close. So that was fantastic. But yeah, we had just finished our project and we're ready to, you know, have our additional dining space available and we were really excited. And we had lots of lots of things planned, but, you know, just it didn't work out that way. So.
All right. Well, we'll put you back on our radar because we do get packaging materials in it in good quantity every once in a while. We'll check with you then.
Yeah, that would be great. The number of resealable plastic baggies that we go through is is a lot. So what every every bit helps for sure.
Any other comments for Sarah?
Chairman Green.
Mr. Horton. Or Mr. Hope?
Yeah, Sarah, I just want to thank you. I do a little work with the Restoration House and I know the soup kitchen is a great, great partner with that organization, and I really appreciate it. I thank you on their behalf. And I know that we also anticipate a huge need this coming year. We're getting ready to open up here in October, and we know that the the need will will be there. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I met with Dee just a couple of weeks ago. Just, you know, we're kind of checking in with each other and. You know, we've arranged, I just told her just to let us know how many meals they're going to need. You know, for your guests. And yeah, we do have a great partnership, and I'm so happy that we're able to serve that community in the way we do. But yeah, you guys, that that's you have some big challenges for sure.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Any other comments for Sarah? Sarah, thank you very much. Anytime you want to come in front of the board, as far as we'd love to have you and hear what's going on and that. So.
Thank you so much for the invitation. I appreciate it and hope everybody continues to stay safe and well. And I guess fall's here now, so on to the next.
There we go.
Bye. Thank you.
Moving on to item B is the administrator controller report. Nicole?
Hopeful to have an adopted fiscal year 21. After tonight's meeting, and of course, you see your accountant Melissa Frank with on here, where she's already making preparations to close out fiscal year 20. So we just, we kind of like Sarah says, with her, you know, fall onto the next thing. That's certainly what we do with budgets. So looking forward to closing out fiscal year 20. In the budget, you know, we're renewing our health insurance platform with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the same platform we've had. So we're looking at open enrollment meetings now, of course. For employee benefit elections this year, likely we're going to have virtual meetings. I don't know how we can responsibly hold meetings with they're so well attended. We have too many people. Certainly together. So we'll probably be looking to do those virtually, but that opens up the opportunity to have spouses or people involved in those meetings would like to be. So who otherwise wouldn't be? So there's there's certainly opportunity in our challenge. I've attended the jail committee meetings with Chairman Green and I really enjoyed getting up to speed on the the project and excited for the next steps. For me, the next steps probably pursuing applications for. A very important next step. Keep zooming a lot with our leadership team. This week, we'll have another Murph Advisory Board, been zooming with Human Rights Committee. But everybody seems to really be in the groove now with with having. We did submit for more. Coronavirus funding, if you will, there's what's called a coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. There were three grants. One for trial court, one for sheriff's office, and one for prosecuting attorney. Prepared their own grant, but we filed the others for sheriff's department and PA. We're still waiting to hear back on CARES Act funding for the hazard pay premium program. Flated to be paid this or this Thursday, I believe. Next Thursday, actually, we were supposed to know last Friday if we received the funds. That's where if we receive the funds, we'll pay it out. So hopefully, we find that out soon. And remember that replacement revenue that we got from the state, they took away our August revenue sharing, but replaced it with about one and a half times from CARES Act funding. They did do that. But then they 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 sent us a nice letter from Treasury that says, yes, CARES Act funding, and you have to use it for CARES Act purposes. So there's quite a bit of reporting requirements that go along the replacement revenue that they sent us. But that's fine. We will. We will report that by the deadline next week. Happy to report I've been in several conversations with Administrator Controller Margaret McAvoy very recently, and she is excited to bring forth legal waters for the other departments at the next round of meetings. So you should see her at by the at the end of this month and in our next round of meetings. So next for me really is, we've got a actually a bond rating call coming up because of the little tobacco in our county dream that you guys have approved full faith and funding for. So we're pulling together financial information for that call. And as your emails have suggested, we're on to the next. We're on to the next thing being equine encephalitis now. Some spraying for that in the county tomorrow. So gypsy moths are next. And here we go, folks. So.
Yeah, we can't even opt out.
No, no, not with that. That is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Nicole? I was surprised. Steve Hall actually called me on that Monday, and there was a meeting in 11 o'clock and and we could not doubt like you can't do if they give you lead enough time. But also where they're spraying, it was around Wademan that he made the comment that that's where the person was with the encephalitis, I believe it is, encephalitis. And so. But you can't opt out, and they can't spray tribal lands without tribal positions. So they had a a deal going into the tribe to see if they would allow them to spray the acreage over there that's actually trust land for the tribes around Wade. Thank you, Nicole. Sounds like you've been busy. Moving on now, there's no administrator appointments boards and commissions brings to committee reports, finance, administration. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, consider accepting and placing on file the September 3, 2020 routine personnel items as presented. There are five step increases and one new hire. The one new hire comes out of the prosecuting attorney's office. She is Nicole Walker. So welcome on welcoming Nicole to the county. Other than that, everything is pretty straightforward. That was it. There's something major on that one.
Item number two then is consider ratifying and placing on file the August 28, 2020 invoice list in the amount of $321,513.68. The September 4, 2020 invoice list in the amount of $409,415.45. List dated September 10, 2020. And just a quick look at those, the August 28 invoice list has a Clark Construction Company, June, August pre-construction services. A little over $24,000 for that. Our July financial services. Payment to Manor Custerian, $11,150. Monthly cellphone bill for Verizon, quite a large bill for some work on Child's Creek. And the boys drain. Dell Marketing LP, 22 new computers, information systems, and one youth treatment. Charge for Muskegon River Youth Home. And then on to the September 4 list, we had our payment to hats, our our regular bi-weekly contract administration. Our tribal 2% distribution for household hazardous waste for the Isabella Conservation District. They had a little household waste pickup at the fairgrounds, which I was able to take care of. I kind of cleaned out my shed a little bit, some stuff that that I don't like having around. So they took that stuff off my hands for me. And then we have several public defender appointments. Payment to Well Path LLC, monthly medical services contract for the jail, and that contract expires here at the end of the fiscal year. So we're going to be talking about that later on in the agenda. A refund for 2018, 2019 tax adjustments for the treasurer's office. The state of Michigan, August district and probate court transmittals. And $35,643 to McBride Quality Care for August youth treatment. And then on to the adjustment list, there's the 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 early payments to Gordon Food Service that we always see. We get an early payment discount for those. And then several entry errors that. Don't see very many of them. There's there's a few on this list. But they were caught early on in the process. So that's a good thing. Any of the commissioners have any questions on any of that? Yeah, Commissioner Jelzinski.
I don't have a question on the the big bills, but on the September 4, when you look at the invoice report on the second page. You always see a bunch of bills that are smaller in dollar amount, and usually you can figure out what they're for. But the very first one is $840 for boarding and hoof trimming. I'm just wondering what that one's all about, if anybody can tell me.
Yes, Commissioner, we actually had a possession of some animals at a property that our animal control officer visited. The case is still under investigation and we are boarding. That are involved with that case.
Okay, thank you.
Judy Walton is the person who luckily on the the county has an informal agreement with her to to do such because clearly at the at the animal shelter, we don't have any 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 way to to properly care for horses. So she's.
Any animal that is in need of help, the county will step in and and take care of that animal, even if it's not a dog or a cat, and assume those costs are.
I believe this is a case of cruelty and or neglect of the animal. So in that case, we'll go in and seize the animal and we we care for them until the case is decided. It may be through through a court case that we see some of this this money back for boarding. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't through those cases, but but that is indeed what the the invoice is for.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Any other questions? Okay, hearing and seeing none, then that item will move forward to tonight's agenda.
All right, next up. Consider approving Clark Construction Company's prime contract change order number 001 in the amount of $70,446 for design assist pre-construction services for the jail and sheriff's office project and authorize the board chair to sign the same. Before we get started, I hope all commissioners received, I think they did, Mr. Nicole was nice enough to send a copy of the preliminary budget to the county commissioners in regards to the jail project. This has to do with design assist. There's basically design assist for detention equipment contract, fire suppression, mechanical plumbing, controls, and electrical contracts. Basically getting everything for the design assist program and also with a J-Poly company. So. Think there's some, I think, somebody's on the line that they want to help with this one, or I mean, it's pretty straightforward. So.
Two people on that with this item, Mary-Kane Bukovich from Clark Construction Company and also from from Clark as well.
Yeah, I can bring up the PCO if you'd like me to walk through that.
If you want to bring it up, that's fine. We've got, sure, that's fine. Yeah, please.
There we go. I did it. First time ever on a Zoom meeting. Okay, um, so for those of you who may want to understand the PCO process, the contract. Our contract was established with the county as a construction management contract based on the cost of the work plus a fee, which is a standard way to establish a contract where the scope and the design are undefined as yet, yet you want to work within a budget and move the project forward. So as the design progresses, we take bids on trade items that we're ready to bid for the cost of their work, and we add those in to our contract to incorporate them into our contract. So we kind of build our contract as we go based on our established fee. And so at this time, we have gone out for bid for design assist for detention equipment, mechanical work, electrical work, and fire protection. And we took competitive bids on those. We reviewed the competitive bids for the best qualifications, really the best value for the project, and took into consideration their price for the project as well. Design assist is a concept that we use at Clark to bring in the contractors into the project early so they can really help drive the project budget and the best value for the client. And these contractors really represent about 75% of the total contract amount for the project. So they have a tremendous amount of influence in the cost and the value of the project. And if we bring them early, that's where they can bring and have the most opportunity to bring value to you. So at this point, we have bid their work, and they've all given us a guaranteed maximum price number. But we've challenged them and we want to drive them down further, and we've set specific goals for them to get to help work with us on the project, not by taking out quality or things you need, but really looking at mechanical and electrical systems and making sure that they're coordinated properly. So at this time, we're just asking to bring in the amount of their design assist contract, which is just a small portion of their overall guaranteed maximum price. And if they work with us through the next months of design and we feel they have brought the proper value and they've met the goals we set for them, then we will award the rest of the contract to them at that point in time when we go out for competitive bids of the rest of the work. If they haven't met those goals. Then obviously, we would go out for competitive pricing at that time again with full design documents and specifications available. So we're really getting the the best value for you by by doing this now. The other thing is, just by going out for design assist now, we've already been able to bring savings to our budget of over, I I believe it's just about about $1,000, $100,000. Rob, is that correct?
That is correct. They're from the projected design or projected budgeted costs for those divisions of work. They've come in under that projected amount. So so it's a good value goodbye for for us at this point.
Right. So anyway, that in essence is what the change order is for, and I apologize, I'm having a problem relocating this. Well, I can't see the full picture for some reason, but the the value of that change order is roughly $70,000.
It's it states here 70,446.
Thank you. I I just, the pictures are up and I'm not used to using, so it's covering my screen there. So unless you have any other change order or questions that you'd like me to explain, I guess I would also like to preface this by saying this is something you're normally going to see from us, where we will have prime contract change orders throughout the project that we will be bringing to you to add work incorporated into our budget. I'm sorry, incorporated into our contract from the budget. They're not extras. It's not extra work that somebody added to the project. It's all anticipated. We have a budget amount for all these things within the budget.
I'd just like to remind the commissioners, too, that this is why we hired a construction company. This commissioner here couldn't figure out one of these designed assist things if he even spent hours and hours on it. So again, this is why we have a construction contract company that we have to put our full faith and credit behind or and full trust behind because this this is a this is a ma- this is the major project in this community. And again, we have to assume of which I I have faith in this organization, the Clark Construction, that what we see here is a final product. This is this is probably the companies that they worked with. And as we go forward, I'm sure that they are, when it comes to us, we are seeing a final not, we're not seeing a work in progress. They've they've hit these people up. I know in in business that you you try to get the best contract that you can before you make a final presentation. So I'm assuming this is the best one, and I'm we're going to see multiples of these, I would imagine, over the next two to three, whatever course of timeframe it goes through. So commissioners, any other questions? whatever course of timeframe it goes through. So commissioners, any other questions in regards to this?
Yeah. Can you hear me, Jim?
Yeah, go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, just a real quick question on your bid category 11A. You only received one bid. Is that typical or did we just happen to, is that, that's all?
But we invited others to bid. Um, we invited Poly Jail, US Security Company, Montgomery Detention Systems, Stronghold Industries and NOAA Detention Equipment. They're all out of state companies. Detention equipment is very, very specialized. And there are very few companies that will even entertain providing equipment to the Midwest, particularly in Michigan. So we ultimately thought it might be possible that we would only have one or two bids. It happens typically on our jail projects in Michigan. It's not unusual. However, I have to tell you, we're thrilled about the lineup here because we feel this process and really the timing, unfortunately with COVID, it's been such misery for so many people. But in this instant, so many contractors are looking for work and we really got the best of the best. Your whole lineup of contractors here, I'm absolutely thrilled that these are the contractors you have. I, it's like I got the A team. I, I am really thrilled.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
Just, just a comment on that, that Poly Jail Building Company, I don't know if it says in the report, but they produce a prefabricated cell pod. You just, you get the pod, it's already done and you plug it into the existing mechanical system. Is that correct, Mary?
They, they produce, what Poly Jail does is they utilize prefabricated jail cells and they bring all the manufacturers of detention products together. So they bring in the water control system, which is the secure system. They bring in the weather be, uh, secure toilet fixtures. They bring in the people who do secure fire protection fixtures. They, they bring in all of these products, the secure doors, the secure, the security systems, and they actually prefabricate those jail cells all together in one place. So they reach out nationally and take competitive bids to help get you the best price and the best product. And they bring those teams together and then they ship those prefabricated cells to us. And we install those, but we get to continue building our building while we're waiting for them to arrive. So once they start arriving, it's just a very interesting process to see. And everything just kind of snaps together and in place because it's all pre-planned.
Just to add a little bit to that, folks, in addition to the steel cells that were mentioned, Poly Jail is also supplying detention doors and some of the non-prefabricated cells, detention glazing, the detention furnishings that are required in the day rooms and such, the mezzanines and the cane screen enclosures that, that enclose these mezzanines. All of that is under Poly Jail's umbrella and contract. So it's a little wider and far reaching, farther reaching than just the prefabricated cells. And all those detention thing, all those detention products, certainly what makes us jail, this project unique. It's not putting up normal windows, normal doors. It's, it's the security issues involved that really puts a price tag on it. Commissioner Hope, is that complete your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other commissioners? All right, hearing is, I see about five of you. Hearing and seeing no more, that will move on to this evening.
See you, Rob and Mary.
There we go. Now, now, now I can see the Hollywood Squares issue.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you all, commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, item number four then is consider approving the recommendation from the Isabel County Sheriff's Office to select Well Path as a successful vendor to provide inmate medical services contingent on successful negotiation of hours and price for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2020. So as I said earlier, Well Path, their contract expires September 30th. The RFPs were sent out earlier this year. They got three approvals. It was kind of felt that the other two companies didn't provide the nursing hours. Well Path provides 3,640 nursing hours, or at least did last year. And that's, uh, that's 1.75 of an FTE just in that. Also, the other thing was the yearly doctor hours at 156 and the other two companies were at 104. The mental health hours at 45.76 versus 24. And what all this does is limit the number of off-site emergency room visits that we have to have. We only had 20 in 2019 and we all know how expensive emergency room visits can be. So saves us, saves us money in the long run. We've got people there. They're, they're in the jail. They work very well with the jail staff. The sheriff has spoken very highly of the staff from this company. They did 833 risk appraisals last year, 2,506 calls. They, they give us quite a level of service. The sheriff has spoken about that. I don't know. I think he's on here. I don't know, Mr. Main, if you want to add anything to that?
You know, that's, uh, that's, that's pretty accurate. Commissioner, what you said, you know, that's a, uh, one of our big, our biggest contract, but it's probably one of our more important ones. And, and it was interesting, you know, that some of the numbers and stuff that from the proposals, the RFP, they were really to reduce hours. I was kind of shocked to see that on some of the other proposals. One of the things that just, it's important to know here, you know, this is a CPI, Consumer Price Index yearly increase. It's usually written in the contract, so it always kind of goes up. They do protect us quite, quite well. One of the things that, you know, we're asking you to, to select Well Path, you know, they've been with us for a long time. Their, their staff is like employees to us. They, they get along very well and they, they go way above and beyond what's required of them every day for us. They help our staff on lots of things. So that's pretty, pretty nice. But one of the things when we, you know, if we can get the board to approve this tonight, we want to, we want to talk about some of the hours for the LPN. The RN is pretty much set, but the LPN, they increased some hours in this new contract and we're not a hundred percent sure we need those hours. So we might be able to adjust some of the hours back a little bit, which would bring maybe that overall cost down a little bit as well. But other than that, Commissioner Hope, you did right on, right in the marks. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on that? I'll just add, the reason we do that is because Medicaid won't pay for jail inmates. So once we incarcerate someone, their healthcare costs are the county's burden. Sheriff, is that true with private insurance as well?
Typically it is. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of changes being worked on right now so they can accept all kinds of insurances. But right now there's some restrictions, you know, you, your private insurance works and the state insurance doesn't type stuff. So it's kind of a, very difficult sometimes for that, that medical stuff. So there is some, some work being done in the Lansing and other areas to kind of correct that. So hopefully we'll see that change down the road.
All right, hearing and seeing none, then that item will move forward to tonight's agenda.
All right, next up, consider approving the agreement with Secure Alarm Systems, Inc. for the period October 1, 2020 through September 30th, 2021 for the security at the Trail Court Sheriff's Office County Building and Commission on Aging in the amount of $44,280 and authorize the board chair to sign the same. This is a contract that we've had for a number of years. It's also in the next line item, which Commissioner Hope will speak to, will also model the public defender's security system. This is, this is a security system. Been with them. Michelle, Michelle likes them quite a bit. Michelle, you're on, I can see your face there and you're unmuted. So go ahead and speak up.
Well, we've had this company since 2009 and we've done nothing but add equipment and change equipment and move equipment and they've been wonderful about it. They get the job done for us and they get their quotes to us. And so I am pleased with them as a company. I'm, I wouldn't consider changing at this point, but yeah, I'm very pleased with their service.
Okay. Uh, like I said, this, the next line item will deal with the Public Defender's Office. But again, we've had this company, I think, since I've been on the board. And Michelle, you've been around here a long time and you would be the first one to, if there was an issue, I'm sure you would come in for this board in regards to this. So commissioners, any questions or anything like that going forward on this? All right, actually I can see everyone now and no questions or seeing. We'll move this forward till tonight. Commissioner Hope, you're next.
Okay, item number six, consider approving the agreement with Secure Alarm Systems Incorporated for the period of October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021 for security at the Public Defender's Office in the amount of $3,468 and authorized the board chair to sign the same. And the same thing, this is security for the Public Defender's Office, which we have to keep those costs separate due to the MIDC grant. Then we get reimbursements for our Public Defender's Office. So any questions on that? If there are none, then that item will also move forward to tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
All right, next up. Consider approving the completion of the State Tax Commission Form L 4029-2020 Tax Rate Request Affirming Each County Approved Millage Rate and Authorize the Board Chair and the Colony Clerk to Sign the Same. Let me get down to this here. Commissioners, on page two of our highlighted document, you'll notice one specific question in regards to medical care operations and remodeling at 0.9795. Recall a few weeks ago, we authorized up to one. And I think Pete Preston is on the line. At least I can see him muted. I don't see a face, but I see a mute. That has been reduced for a rollback, I think, that happened. I don't have the date in front of me, but it was because of a rollback and went from one back to 0.9795. So I believe that was my understanding. I'm still waiting to see if Mr. Preston can speak or not speak or. Pete, are you there? I still see a mute, so we're going to assume that that was correct in that statement. So again, this, this is just given the, the authority to pass what we've, go ahead.
I'm sorry, he's, he is there, but for some reason his video is not coming on.
I don't even hear audio. So, oh, there he is. All right, Pete, you're up.
Thank you. My office is, is, as you can tell, nice today, but I've had to double duty with the memorial service for some, I have to wait during COVID. So we're taking care of that business as well. As, as it concerns the, the medical care facilities, that was a rollback that happened a little bit ago. We're still in the exact timeframe that happened in. The county's always been leveraging, living 0.70 and this year has seen a maximum, I believe, this year be like that. The maximum, which would be.
Okay, Pete, you're breaking up there for us. I think we're gonna, thank you for the presentation. I think you're, you're frozen. This, this is even worse than my last two attempts at, uh, I've had to go to my phone the last two. So, um, again, this is, this is just allowing us to basically put out, put out so we're able to tax as far as a taxing entity that we're able to request what we're doing. This is all basically a paperwork shuffle here. So any board commissioners have any questions or comments in regards to this? Hearing and seeing none, this will move forward to this evening.
Hey, item number eight, consider adapting the following fee schedule under the enhanced data access policy. Policy number 112 of Isabel County Property Assessment Data. $1,000 per request for county by assessment data and $56 or 1/18 of $1,000 per request for individual local units' assessment data. And as it said in the report, I think we've had the policy since 2006, but we were getting more and more requests from data. We're getting requests from companies like Zillow, Realtor.com, the other realty, online realty companies that, that need a lot of data for that. And so this will allow for some increased revenue into the equalization department. There, I don't know, Nicole, if you want to add anything or if any of the commissioners have questions or comments?
The only thing I might have to add is I think if I recall, I'm going to click on it without checking my memory here, but wasn't there only like about 12? And so it's not a high, high volume. It's just basically covering any expenses that we might incur and especially preventing things in the future if things go. But I think there was only right now, I think there was 12 that's been requested in the last year or so, if I recall correctly. So.
It's usually, usually a monthly request from, from those type of companies. So we are anticipating maybe 12 a year, but it's something that they're getting around now because they're just voiding the information. Because since, you know, Commissioner Hope noted, the policy's been in place since 2006, but we've only been charging for the, the GIS type of enhanced data. And equalization certainly enhances the data with the sales study they do and how they, how they interpret, manipulate, analyze the data. So they are adding value to that. So basically it's, it's finally getting paid for the work being done, actually.
I, I think Commissioner Jalosinski had his hand up. Do you have a question?
I do. Every once in a while I hear from one of my township assessors. They get upset because the county's charging them for information that they use for the public benefit. And I don't know what we charge the townships. I think we had a special rate or something. I don't know if that's reflected here. But I don't, what kind of revenues are we getting from the townships or the other municipalities that knew this information? And if it's not very much, is it worth doing it to a public body that uses it for the benefit of the public?
Yeah, I, I don't think this would be for that purpose. This would be more for those commercial type places like Zillow who are trying to get our, our sales data, basically. It wouldn't, these aren't other, to other, other municipalities requesting the information.
So the townships wouldn't be paying for this information if they requested it.
I, I don't believe so. I believe that is correct. That, that's not the intention.
Maybe it's a different category of information than I'll have to.
Yeah, let's, let's continue that conversation and, and we'll include Pete on a better day.
Thank you.
Any other questions? On that, hearing none, then that item will move forward to tonight's agenda.
All right, next up, number nine, consider approving the fiscal year 2020 budget amendment for Siegel Waters implementation of remaining general fund departments in the amount of $145,870 and non-jungle fund departments in the amount of $77,950 and authorize the board chair to sign the same. This is, uh, again, anticipation of the upcoming approvals and everything with the courts and the department heads that are, excuse me, the county department. So pretty straightforward, covers everything. Again, it's takes out of the, the biggest thing is what's coming out of the general fund. And we talked about that and I believe Nicole will also state in the 2021 budget that has been reflected for this increase. So.
All this does make it possible to, to do the retro in the current year.
Correct. And I'm, I'm glad, sorry. And also too, I believe that if we, if we don't do something like this and we have to, there's, there's some issues involving timing with us is that if you do it and everything works fine, great. Or if you don't do it, then you have to come back at a later time or after the fact, then it comes into audit. Is that an issue? Is that correct statement there?
That is correct. September thirtieth is the end of your fiscal year. You cannot make budget amendments after September thirty. So being your last meeting of the year, this was the only opportunity for the commissioners to make way in the current budget for Siegel Waters implementation retroactively as you have supported to to this end. This does not take that action. It only makes room in the current budget if you should take that action in the future.
Commissioner Moreno.
Yeah, I'm glad your staff caught caught this, and and this attention to detail is really admirable, so we can keep going.
Agreed.
Thanks, Melissa.
Commissioner Jalazinski. I know we, as we addressed some of the elected officials and other departments earlier this year, there was an opportunity for those to be able to speak to the the study where the department heads able to do that, too, for some of their staff, if they felt that the original data was incorrect.
My understanding is those meetings are occurring with Margaret as we speak. And and she will have those meetings with with those depart and and I and I believe she's already had some, you know, leading up to, but but she's intending to meet with all of those department heads prior to offer coming to finance on the twenty-nine.
Okay, and that will then possibly change this this budget with a budget amendment would change, but the costs may change. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, the budget amendment can't change after tonight. You know, it'll be whatever it is. And and you know, I've I've been very insulated from the process, as you will, and not really involved when Melissa brought it forward. Hey, we are talking about retroactivity. You know, we're we're gonna need this this budget amendment. We had to make some assumption and we and we had to estimate. You'll notice the budget amendments are in quantities of, you know, I think that were fifty-dollar increments, hundred-dollar increments. So we we just, we we did some estimating to make sure to to build in what we thought it would be. It won't it won't shake out exactly, but at least it it allows for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe also, too, and Nicole, in the administration meeting, our finance administration, I believe you say that it's better to if you come in under it, then it's basically just a, oh, why did you come in under it? Shame on you versus why do you didn't request this? Oh, boy, we have a big issue here.
Exactly, yes.
So.
Being over budget is always worse at audit time than than being a little under budget. Yes, sir. Keep from mentioning that, it's important.
Anybody, any other commissioners have any comments or questions on this?
Mr. Horton.
That would be Commissioner Hope.
Mr. Hope, yeah. Nicole, wasn't the retroactivity, is that our thinking there is that that will go back to April?
Yeah, that's that's been the conversation thus far.
Okay.
That's always been what Margaret has indicated in her conversations because I believe she was ready to bring that forward to the board in April. And obviously, due to no one's fault, you know, she the coronavirus interrupted things and and her leave has interrupted the process as well. So she's still dedicated to bringing that forward upon her return in April is is still the the date that she's intending to recommend retroactivity to.
Thank you.
Any other further questions or comments by commissioners? Hearing and seeing none, that will complete the agenda of the Finance and Administration Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Good job. You had quite a long agenda there, a lot of stuff in it. Moving on, item B is the Criminal Justice and County Affairs Committee. Gentlemen.
We have one item, and it's consider approving the agreement for attorney services for indigent individuals to manage assigned council contract effective October first, two thousand twenty to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize the board chair to sign the same. We did get in the packet a overview of the broad indigent defense office budget and and gets a contract for the managed portion of the budget. I see us Huntsman is here. Thomas, would you like to take over?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Essentially, this is a reauthorization of the yearly contract. The county routinely enters into this contract. This is for the manage assigned council portion of the M I D C. These individuals are outside of the public defender's office. If everyone remembers, our plan anticipates our office handling seventy-five percent of all indigent defense services for the county. This contract is for that additional twenty-five percent that is not covered by our office. That is for, you know, cases where there would be a conflict of interest for us to handle if if two people were co-defendants, they the people on the contract would handle essentially one of those cases. But they also handle the juvenile justice program, probate court, neglect and abuse hearings, things like that. The only change going forward in the contract from the current contract of fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty-one is I asked the attorneys to start billing by the the tenth of the hour. They were billing, there was never anything in the contract that required them to bill a certain way. It has been standard practice that they've been doing it by the quarter of an hour. And we are going by rates authorized by the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, which establishes a hundred dollars an hour for misdemeanors, hundred and twenty-five dollars for felonies. And so with everything being done virtually, you know, that was a rather large amount of money that we were contracting out for, for instance, sending an email, twenty-five dollars per email, things like that. So I have asked the attorneys to start billing by the tenth of the hour, largely as a as a consequence of the way we're doing doing court and doing business now. There's been no no pushback or anything like that. It's been absolutely no problem. So this is essentially a reauthorization of that contract with that added caveat that provides a direct like billing agreement as to how billing should be done.
Questions?
Just real quick, just looking at the some of the attorneys on the the attorney services, they kind of run the gamut from Mr. Shirley down to Jennifer Zalesnyak. If you look at some of the P numbers, P numbers are one of the rays you can look at sometimes, kind of how long a attorney's been kind of in practice. And mine's at four, seven, which I've been going on since nineteen ninety-two.
Mine's seven, four.
Yeah, so Mr. Mr. Sure, Mr. Shirley is at twen is at two, zero, three, eight, two. Now, Mr. Shirley, I comment only because I know Mr. Shirley fairly well, and I golf with Mr. Shirley, and he can, I've never seen a person more steady on the golf course. He just hits that straight down the middle, and I just envy that because you you play with him and you see him do that, then you sort of sit there and go, I can outdrive him, and you hit their kid at the shank it in the woods or something like that. So angry playing with him. So again, I like to see Bill Shirley is a great person, and I just hope to have morale for the next X amount of contract years. So he's a very nice person.
You and I both.
So.
Any other questions, comments? I just want to make a comment. I know when our committee was looking at what direction the county should take in the indigent defense program, I certainly had questions, concerns about how we were going to move this forward. It seemed like a huge undertaking, one of the largest departments that came along in many, many years. Want to end us, your predecessor, Sarah, and you, Tom. I think that it's been a rather smooth transition. I don't hear of any problems, and we appreciate that perspective of the county board and part of the county board. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll move this forward then to the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
That will complete the work of the Criminal Justice and County Affairs Committee. We kept it short.
Hey, so you're doing your work. It moves us on to the Human Resource and Public Works Committee. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first item is consider approving the agreement for attorney services for indigent individuals manage assigned council contract effective October first, two thousand twenty to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize the board chair to sign the same. Jen, could you help us out here on?
I'm thinking you have the wrong agenda item.
Oh, sorry. You're right, right, right. Okay, I wonder, okay.
You do, or I had the wrong one.
No, okay, I'll try that again, sorry. The first item is consider approving the in individual service contracts between Isabella County Commission on Aging and Roger Stremlow, Larry Davis, Paul Strickler for services as bulk meal delivery driver effective October first, two thousand twenty through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize the board chair to sign the same. Okay, now, Jen, can you?
I feel a lot more comfortable speaking to this one. So what you have before you, this is just our personal services contract that we're renewing for our three bulk drivers. So we have two typical or two normal bulk routes that we do, and we do have our congregate meals. So we're just preparing for the day that we get to open those back up, and so we will have our drivers ready to go. And these bulk drivers basically pick up the bulk food from Commission on Aging in the big serving containers and deliver it out to those congregate sites for the meals to take place. And so and then we have one sub as well that's in here.
Anybody have any questions or comments on that item? Board?
No, sir. Commissioner Green, Mr. Chairman Green.
Just a comment. Commissioner, the Roger Stremlow and Larry Davis and Paul Strickler, Richard Paul Strickler have been on for a long, long time, known Paul personally since he owned a restaurant out in Coldwater Lake, but they do a very good job. I'm glad they're still here and participating. Thank you.
Commissioner Horton, did you have a comment or question? No, I just, no, I did not. Thank you. That then we'll move that to the meeting this evening.
All right, item two, consider approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one Isabella County Commission on Aging nutrition site agreements for congregate meal sites with Shepherd, United Methodist Church at a rate of one hundred and fifty per month, Fremont Township Wind Community Building at a rate of three hundred per month, Rosebush Manor at a rate of ninety per month, and Sherman Township Wideman at a rate of two hundred and fifty per month, authorize aboard. Chair, sign. All right, Jen.
So these are, this will just be the contracts that we have with these four different entities to rent their facilities to do our congregate meals. So the 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 fees have been negotiated through all of them, and they've remained unchanged for many years that I know of. So this is the same as last year. And so again, we're just ready. So we want to have these contracts in place so that when we're able to start providing our congregate meals again, that we have our place all set and dedicated for us, and and we're ready to go.
All right, thank you, Jen. Any commissioners have a questions?
Again, this is this is one of the, I don't want to say the harms with COVID, but this is, again, this 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 is something you really, this, the community needs this, and this is just one of the things that's, well, there's no really no positives ever come out of COVID. This is definitely a major negative, so.
Constantly asking, when are we going to open again? And we see our folks drive around our building who typically come to our center, and we recognize their cars, and you can see them come through and drive through weekly and multiple times a week, just, I think, probably with the hope that we're open. So, you know, we're still making those calls, we're still touching base with them, and we're ready, we're ready and and excited to have them come back, and I know they're just as excited to be back with us.
All right, seeing no other questions, we'll move this on to tonight's regular session meeting.
Concludes the work of the Human Resources and Public Works Committee, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, gentlemen, good job. We don't have any intergovernmental affairs this evening, or this afternoon, rather. No administrator controller issues, unfinished business. Commissioner Horton, would you like to read that and present it, please?
Certainly, consider approving the Isabella County Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-one Budget Resolution and General Appropriations Act Resolution number twenty dash zero nine dash zero one. Okay. Is I, there's a resolution with this, or that was just it? So? Or you want me to read the whole resolution?
The resolution is very interesting. The only thing is, it's quite long.
Yeah.
It's pretty much the same as we've had resolutions before and had things added and changed around. But the total, you know, the budget is just a discussion of bringing forward this evening. We have it coming forward this evening anyway, with the public comment and that, or.
I can I can definitely talk to the budget as far as the work involved, and I think I I think this year, especially with most, if I could, I don't, maybe that's where we're going to go with this, is that I think Commissioner Hope and I decided after hearing, I'm not, I'm speaking for Commissioner Hope again, but I, coming through the finance administration, I think, over the years, is that we wanted to try to bring all the commissioners up as fast as we can, as when something came in front of the front of the our committee, to try to let the rest of the commissioners have input and input early on, because I think that makes a more functioning board. Nicole has put down a wonderful job in transparency. When we first saw our first draft, I believe, again, I don't have the information in front of me, but I'm calling up memory, right around, I think, two point two million, somewhere in that range. It was a large dollar amount. We worked through the first draft, we worked through some second drafts, we had some unique discussions on how we can trim dollars, how we what some discussions that some of us didn't feel comfortable in having, because I think it might have been rushed, but I think we're probably going to have to have them in the future. We had some new issues coming, we had some new revenues come in with the turbines. From that, we decided, wow, we're getting a lot of money with the turbines. Now we need to start looking at some of our debt going forward, how that can be used. I think some of that came out, a very good discussion. Again, this was one of the more transparent budget negotiation, budget discussions that I can remember having in my eight years as the county commissioner. I think this was done very well. Again, anytime you have to pull money out of your fund balance, you're going to hear kicking and screaming from me on that. I mean, I don't like to relinquish any nickel that I don't think is being improper, that I think is being spent, but I think everything here, there are some outs or some unique things we haven't done this time. We haven't taken any money out of the delinquent tax revolving fund. I'm not going to state that now because we're under legal obligations, so I'm not going to make any comments on that, even though even though I think that that could have happened. I think it's a good move for us not to do it at the moment. I'm just trying to go off some other comments I wanted to make on this. But yeah, I think the this this is a is reflective of going forward, this, if if you want to take a snapshot in time with the county and kind of look forward five to ten to twenty years down the road, this might be the year that you see with this budget, what could shake out in the next few years. We've got, we've got debt revolving to the retirement fund. We've got some, let me know, we're touched on it, we still taking some monies out for the jail. That was, guess that was last year, but there 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 is some interesting times with our budgets coming up in the near future. And again, this was done very transparently and I with input from all the commissioners and in early on with all the commissioners, which I am very happy to hear have and have input with all the commissioners in regards to this. So I don't know if that's what you're looking for, Mr. Chairman, but there you go, so.
Well, that's good enough. I think I learned a lot, you know, in trying to find this beginning fund balance between the unspendables, restricted committed, signed and unassigned. And after looking in the old budget to try and find that stuff, Nicole, help me actually do, it's quite interesting, because, first of all, I never knew that the administrator actually lays that money out when you're doing the audit. And that's where that three hundred and three million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars actually came to. It's actually assigned, but it's ours to make and do with what we want. And that's where you pulled your money this year to balance this budget, actually, unassigned that amount of money, that's three hundred and thirteen thousand. And I certainly respect that. That's about the lowest, I think, fund balance we've taken out in quite a few years.
Yeah, right, correct. Correct, and and, yep. And also from two thousand nineteen, on our last audit, I believe we had budgeted to take out, and we actually ended up putting back in and coming forward with that. So again, with a budget, it's like a jigsaw puzzle, putting it together. It's a, and to quote Administrator McAvoy, if she's on the phone or watching on YouTube, she has a famous statement that it's a living and breathing document. It's a constantly moving, flowing document. And as we've seen in the last few board meetings, we're kind of taking some money out of our fund balance and to come back and forth with that. But again, anything that we've taken out in our fund balance with the jail expenses out of two thousand twenty, as we go forward with that, that will probably be a budget amendment. I don't know how that will work. I don't even want to think about that, but that will probably be a budget amendment going back to it or something. Steve Kornavich or Nicole knows that better than I do, as far as how that would affect a budget and adjustments. But again. But again, I think it was a very good job on the budget. Twenty one million, roughly twenty one million dollars, uh, that's a hefty. I think when I first came on the board, I recall like a number like sixteen million. I don't know why I'm thinking that, but, that seems to be the budget when I came. So we've gone quite a bit up. With additional revenues coming in, which is a very few counties, again, I'll state this. Isabella County is a unique position. Very few counties can sit there and say, we are anticipating a large increase in revenue coming in. And I don't know of any county around, well, except maybe to the South Grasha that has a steady income from turbines. But that's a, with today's, to sit there and say, wow, we've got this money coming in is there's some sacrifices some community members made in regards to this. Maybe they didn't really want to do that. But overall, I think it's, this, it's a, it's, this community is positioned to do very well in the future. So.
Uh, Commissioner Horton, is a lot of that money that we're spending right now, Clark Construction and things like that, when we borrow the money for the jail, you'll get reimbursed for it. And that's where you might have to put a budget amendment in. But I know we just did that, that money for, uh, Clark Construction there that'll come out of the jail budget when we borrow the money that, whatever amount of money it is to do the jail, that money will return back to your fund balance here, or wherever you give spend it and took it from. So that's a wait and see for next year and a new board, but, uh, it'll be done and you'll have it back. So.
Any other comments on the budget? No, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Hope?
Yeah, um, Commissioner Horton covered this pretty well. There isn't too much I can add to that, but I, I have no reservations about supporting this budget. It's a good budget. If you look down through capital improvement requests, only a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, it's, it's not a big wish list uh, for next year. And some of that's patrol vehicles, and some of that will be offset by transfers in from the commissary fund. So if you look down through the expenditures, you see most of those line items actually decreasing. And I know that, that represents a lot of work from Nicole and her staff and Melissa and the department heads on how to really buckle down and, and, and decrease the, the cost there at a time when, you know, the salaries are increasing and that's forty three percent of the budget. Uh, healthcare premiums went up nine percent and the, uh, that's twenty four percent of the general fund budget. So with those things going on and to be able to hold line, hold the line on expenditures, uh, is, you did a very good job. We, everyone did a very good job on this, I think.
Any other discussion? Nicole?
I would say I'm very proud of the proposed budget that's being presented tonight. As Commissioner Hope said, it does represent a lot of work from a phenomenal team, not only in the administration office, but also the members of this board. Commissioner Horton, you've got it exactly right. This budget shows a lot of growth. And probably the hardest thing is going to be to watch our neighbor suffer through, um, through, through this growth, right? We're, I, I believe we're going to be okay. The, the budget has no layoffs, you know, there's no terminations. We have built a hiring pause in, which is really represents best practice. It's not necessarily a bad thing. There's a one percent increase in wages built in, a huge investment in our staff that's built in and no changes to the healthcare, the cross Blue Shield platform that is important, so important to our employees. So, um, I do want to point out to you some of the changes from what was presented two weeks ago, because in this document, very few things have changed, but I do want you to be aware of those. On page eleven of the document, it's that front page of the actual resolution, talking about the medical care facility millage and even though, you know, your action a couple of weeks ago was to set it at one mil. L forty twenty nine, that was before you tonight, um, that Pete Preston spoke about that is getting rolled back and the maximum that can be levied is the point nine seven nine five. So that is a change from that resolution, in that resolution from last time. The other changes on page fourteen of the, the budget document, and that's where you've talked about Commissioner, Chairman, about the fund balance being presented, and that was at request, um, I believe of Commissioner Horton specifically, to let, let's spell this out, um, where our fund balance is at and, and across all of those categories. And you can actually see in the current fiscal two thousand and twenty amended budget, for instance, that non-spendable amount of seventy four thousand dollars, non-spendable at the end of fiscal two thousand and nineteen, if you remember, that was inventory. The hundred and fifty thousand extra was the money, if you recall, two weeks ago, you approved a transfer of due to, due from to the drain revolving fund. That's, that's where that hundred and fifty thousand went is actually a non-spendable. It's still in our fund balance because it will be paid back to us. That's why we did a due to, due from. But that's how, you know, this kind of tells the story better where, where are the funds at? The assigned of over three million, you know, we believe there's a couple of million of working capital for the jail project built in there, luckily. So my recommendation would be that the commissioners actually commit those monies that they're going to use to the jail and move that up to that committed category, so that it would take board action to undo it. And then the unassigned you can see is, is coming down, that change or use of fund balance represents that nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget amendment that you approved last time for Seagull Waters and the, the, the money that was initially budgeted to use to balance the budget. But it's just a little more transparent and, and hopefully you can follow, follow that. A little better.
Yeah, it's excellent. I have no problem with presenting the budget. Any other questions? Chris Chalidensky?
I plan on voting for the budget, uh, tonight. Want to commend Nicole for providing, uh, a clear picture of what the challenge is in terms of revenues and expenditures that we're facing. I am concerned that we had to have those wind generation taxes to balance this year, and we got to keep in mind that's going to go down significantly. And we'll have to make those up as, as to the base of maybe thirty percent of what we may enjoy in the first year. My biggest concern is as we move forward, how are we going to finance this, this new jail? How are we going to take on additional two, two and a half million dollars in a bond repayment? Dollar is going to come from it. I support the jail and we need it badly. We need to keep our focus and, and it's a challenge. And I think we're going to earn our limited salary, it's counting, counting board commissioners, uh, for the next, uh, for the next term and beyond.
Any other discussions? Well, we got that on agenda for this evening to be approved after the public hearing, so. Moving on, the, uh, on our new business, we have four tribal requests, Mission on Aging, uh, Materials Recovery Facility, Sheriff's Office and the Trial Court. Nicole, did you get everybody's?
Yes, sir. Several commissioners.
She did, she didn't get mine yet. It's right here and I will, you'll get that in the email attachment between meetings. If not, if, if, if not, I'm just going to show it up like that, but I haven't got it filled in yet. So.
Everybody hold her paper up, please, or raid you on it.
No, I will, I will, I will scan it and send it. So there you go. And George, I'm going to just scan it with my cell phone, just, just in honor of you, George. So.
Thank you, sir. You dare to watch or do it, but I just can't. Everybody going to send theirs in yet, or?
Yeah, they'll do it, um, before the night meeting.
Okay.
Who do you, uh?
Don't we want the, the department heads are here to speak to their two percent app?
Yeah, all right.
Carrie Curtis has been so patient. She's, she's been back and forth, uh, in and out of the meeting. So she's, I'm sure she's, and Carolyn has been patient. Sheriff and Jen and Jake are all here.
Anybody got any comments on the, uh, two percent request? Mr. Jelodensky?
I think they're all good projects. What I'm concerned about, it seems like I'm Mr. Doom and Gloom at this, uh, at today's work session. But I had three months where the, uh, gaming, the resort was closed down, and that's going to impact the amount of two percent monies that will be available for all the governmental entities that are eligible for them. And, you know, I, we're, we're asking for the funds, a lot of other people asking for funds, but I know that the amount that's going to be available is going to be down significantly from enjoyed in the past.
You don't know what it'll be till we see, when we go out there and check it out. It'll be interesting to see, Mr. Chalidensky. Any other comments on the two percent?
Do you want to hear from the department heads?
Pardon?
Do you want to hear from the department heads and electeds on their individual?
Yes, if they've got some.
You're all, then I would start with Jen Crawford.
That's what they do and just ask them, but that's fine. You know, have them.
They're a little slow to start. Jen Crawford, would you like to speak on your two percent application?
I would love to. Thank you. So basically, you know, that the Commission on Aging, we have been so fortunate with the generosity of the Saginaw Indian Tribe through two percent funding since November nineteen ninety five. We've received just under nine million dollars in two percent funding, which is unbelievable. And all the funds that we do have received and will hopefully continue to receive through their generosity is, is only used for direct services. We do not utilize any of the funds and any of our administrative costs at all. So it just goes to our direct services. So this application that you see is the exact same one that we did, that we did submit this spring, and that was a request from the tribe to the Commission on Age years ago, Commission on Aging years ago, to, to submit the same request in both the spring and the fall, um, application, uh, processes. So, um, that's why you're seeing the same one that we sent this spring. And in the spring, we were fortunate, we did receive a hundred and ten thousand dollars with, uh, through that first distribution, which we were very pleasantly surprised because I didn't know even at that time if it would, if it would still take place. So, uh, we're very fortunate for that.
Thank you, Jen. Any questions for Jen? Moving on to materials recovery. So, Jake?
Good evening. Um, again, I'm going to, uh, as Jen said, I'm going to kind of echo what she had to say on, uh, you know, as far as the material recovery facility is concerned and the great fortunes that we've had with the Sagan, uh, the two percent funding from the Saginaw Chippewa Drive, so greatly appreciated. Uh, and, uh, you know, we feel quite blessed that, uh, that being the case. You know, we also was fortunate enough in the spring that, uh, we received, uh, almost sixty eight thousand dollars, uh, towards a purchase of a new scale for the facility. Absolutely shocked that, uh, any funding was, uh, made available from that two percent fund, uh, for the spring. So quite, uh, quite excited to have gotten that, uh, in which you've seen that in the capital expenditure moving forward from this department, um, to, uh, purchase, the, the possible purchase of a new scale. This year, we're asking for some funding from the two percent, uh, to do some repair on asphalt within the facility to try and, uh, clean up some issues that we've had. Uh, we've tried to do some repairs and things of that nature. But it's getting to the point where we need to do a little bit more, uh, repair work on it. Uh, we set this, uh, two percent funding up in a little bit different styling. Uh, some of the things that was talked about in the roundtables in the last couple of years that the tribe have had, and that's that, uh, if there is projects that are, or are or could be funded in a multiple, um, timeframe basis, that would be ongoing. You can see the total request on our two percent was fifty three thousand, eight forty five. In, but the breakout from, uh, central asphalt for that, uh, funding was in four different segments. And you've seen by the picture that was attached, uh, the, an aerial photo of the facility. That's what I'm trying to do with that is to give the tribe the opportunity to still fund it, but at lower amounts and break it out so that if they done it in, uh, one, two, three or four year, uh, one in the, you know, spring and fall requests, uh, whether it was done in, in four separate, uh, individual ones, uh, it could be done over a timeframe, uh, rather than asking for all of it all at once. Um, considering, uh, taking some in consideration for COVID nineteen and their closure. So, and with hopes of still being able to, uh, be blessed enough to be able to get some, uh, two percent funding.
Thank you, Jake. Any questions for Jake? There are none. Moving on to the sheriff's office.
Good afternoon again, commissioners and everybody else. Um, so our request is the same as it was the last couple of times. We're trying to put some new cameras in the patrol cars, which are some critical, uh, need. Um, we've got two cars now. They're not functioning at all. They're completely, uh, no cameras into them. Um, the, the body worn camera program, uh, the, the storage and stuff will work with these new ones. They, they were purchased, uh, this wash guard company was purchased by Motorola. Where these become critical, um, for us is, you know, it's, it's, they, they record the backseat, they record forward facing. So when, when deputies are transporting the opposite sex or juveniles, they'll let that run. So that is a protection to the community. It's a trust in the community. It's also, um, helps reduce, minimize, uh, make sure that we don't have issues, um, from people making complaints that aren't justifiable with this going on. So, so basically that when that camera runs, uh, the, the transporting an opposite sex, there's no issues with somebody saying something, basically. So, uh, it is critical. We need to get this moving forward. If I don't get the grant, we're going to have to look at some other options, probably in the next budget cycle or something to start trying to replace some of these. So it's kind of getting to the point where we're, we're in trouble here. So that's about the extent of it.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions for the sheriff? Moving on to the trial court, Carrie?
Good evening. You again. We're doing great. Hopefully my grandson doesn't scream too much in the background. So. So we two are very fortunate. Um, the tribe has been very kind and provided the, the court with a lot of, um, resources to help, um, particularly with testing our, um, court users who, you know, may be experiencing drug and alcohol addictions. So that helps us keep them clean, keep them sober and, um, catch any relapses early. I'll let Carolyn speak a little bit more about, um, exactly what we're asking for, but it is a twenty thousand dollar, um, amount to help with testing. With COVID, we have not been able to do our in-office testing, so it costs more to test at an outside agency. We're hoping someday we will be able to reopen to the public and resume our, our services. Um, we're going a little bit better in that direction today, it looks like. So we're hopeful for that, but I'll let Carolyn talk a little bit about, um, the program and what, and what she hopes to do with the money if we were to receive it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carolyn Johnson from the Swift Insurance Program. Carrie said it very well, actually. I mean, this is our first time requesting two percent monies on behalf of the Swift Insurance Program. And as she stated, we're looking to use that for alcohol and substance testing. I, there's really not much else to say. I don't think about it. It's a pretty straightforward application. And I guess if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Carolyn or Carrie? Here, non-ladies, thank you very much. That'll be moved to this evening and, uh, placed out at Saginaw Chippewa. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
Now we move on to
That is interesting. We did have a caller, um, but they have, have, uh, I'm going to show the non-video participants just so I can do a little check. There's no one for a public comment at this.
I'm going to show the non-video participants just so I can do a little check. There's no one for a public comment at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Nobody on for general public comment. We will move on to announcements. Are there any announcements, Commissioner Reno?
Yes, uh, I heard the news that the, there's a deal in Lansing for budget and there will not be any cuts to revenue sharing for us. That's good news.
Wow, good. Mr. Horton?
Real quick, I'm sorry, my video stopped for a moment. Back into the new business section, hey? I just have a question on the two percent. Nicole, maybe you can answer this real quick. Um, given the fact, I believe that the casino or the tribe's revenue was probably down for two to three months, uh, first quarter, into the second quarter. How is that? Is, is this fall two thousand and twenty semi-annual two percent? Is that based off those, that revenue timeframe, or is that based off a different revenue timeframe?
I believe it is based off of that revenue timeframe. So I, I do believe that their, their, um, their give going to, to be lower than it has in the past. However, I think it's just, it's positive that they're having the, the fall two percent, uh, application bound. I think that in itself is a, is a positive. So we're thrilled the opportunity is there and, and thrilled that to, to have these four applications in, in the world.
Yeah, the Saginaw Chippewa tribe over the last, well, X amount of years since I've moved into town nineteen ninety-seven and beyond, um, have always been very favorable to not just Isabella County, but to the community in general. And they, among everyone else in this community, has fallen upon hard times. So if the grants are lower or the, or, um, let's not point fingers or do anything because they have suffered. Again, that, that is a tremendous, that's a tremendous entity. It's a tremendous organization. Uh, it's a large provider of jobs in our community and they were shut down for quite a period of time. Um, so again, if, if, just like you said, by doing this, even having these, I say it's something to their integrity and character.
Yep.
So.
Mr. Angler?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, I'm having a little bit of computer problems here too, so I hope you can hear me. So, um, I was invited by Paul Gross to get a little bit involved with the Gypsy Moth program. Um, they are having a meeting tonight at Lake Isabelle. The west side of the county got hit pretty hard. Uh, part of that'll be getting out information and information and maybe trying to set up some schedules so they can cost share some spraying in the spring when it needs to be done. Um, like I said, they were supposed to have a meeting tonight, but I think between the deer and the speed limit, I don't think I could make it there and back, so. Even, even though I, even though I see the sheriff is gone right now, so, but I still probably can't make it. Maybe trying to make it over there. So, um, I try to keep you updated and look. They, we've seen more damage this year than we have quite a bit. So, uh, it's another thing to keep, keep an eye on. Um, one other comment that I had, I know we're talking about GIS system and requests and I, um, maybe this will be a topic for a later time. I know with the elections, there's been, some of my townships been getting out of requests about getting information, voter information. I don't know if, uh, maybe he's not on here anymore, but, um, I know they were kind of concerned about having to deal with the request to do, so. So that's all I have, so. I'll end it there.
I'm here, Frank, if you had any questions for me.
Are you handling all the requests fairly well from the, uh, for like the absentee voter information so far, or is that?
Those are all only
You got a lot?
Township clerks only because the county clerks, uh, cannot, um, touch AV ballots. So that's just at the township level. Um, they're not too, um, we don't have, they're handling them okay. It's not, it, it's not
Okay.
Amount of AVs right now. I was going to speak about the AV drop boxes that have just been delivered. I am absolutely a hundred and ten percent not satisfied with them. I might be taking them all out. A person has already vandalized one. And we also have, you can open them up, stick your hand in it and grab ballots. So I'm sending this off to both parties and all the township clerks and going to try and figure out what we're going to do about them. So I'm, uh, the integrity of the election is what, uh, you know, I stand behind. And if, if I don't think they're safe, um, I don't want to use them either. And, um, I just don't know what to do. So I'll probably be bringing that to you guys too for some input, um, within two weeks.
Man, there's not much time left either, is there?
I know. But our ballots are just delivered this Saturday and then they'll start sending them out. So by the time we have the next meeting would be around, I don't even know if people will be using them by then, but um, I, I, we've taken pictures and I really would like some input from my commissioners, township clerks, both parties. Um, I sent pictures off to both parties too. I really want, you know, a lot of input on this, um, because I don't want to have any problems in Isabella County with, uh, destruction or ballots not reaching the clerks. Um, it is a big concern to mine now today, so.
Mr. Swainy?
Yes, uh, real quick, the Isabella County Human Rights Committee is having their annual Let Peace Reign event this Saturday at five o'clock. It'll run for two hours and there will be, uh, speeches given by, uh, national and local, um, people, also, uh, poets and music. So five o'clock and it's Facebook Live. So go to the Facebook website for Isabella County Human Rights Committee.
Anything else?
One other thing, uh, on that lock boxes. Uh, Judy Schumaker had one. She put the key and now she can't get the key out of it at all. And she told us it, it doesn't even open. Then she brought one over to the treasure and there's no key with the box that exists for it.
Oh, for the AV drop box?
Yeah.
Bell box?
Drop boxes.
Everyone's just now getting them, so, yeah. I'll, I'll do a report back to you guys at the next meeting.
Thanks, Wendy.
Sure.
Motion adjourned.
Don't move, Jelinski.
We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. See you in an hour. And a half.